It's to begin to get ready to reconvene. It's two. All right. Well, welcome back to the reconvened council meeting from the sixth of November. And we have an apology from the mayor for absence and from councillor Moore for absence. We have councillor Gough on Zoom. Hi councillor Gough, apology for lateness from councillor Harrison Hunt and a partial absence from councillor Donovan. Um, I think that's it, everything, isn't it? And councillor McDonald is an apology for absence as well. Um, so I can have a mover for those. Councillor Peters seconded by councillor Hinstock. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Posed, that's carried. Um, no declarations of interest, no public participation. Can I please have a mover and seconder to include the further supplementary report for item twenty nine on the Heathcote Expressway MCR, Scruttons Road crossing, councillor Barber, councillor Scandret, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, that's carried. Righty ho, so we'll launch back into item twenty nine, um, the MCR on the Heathcote Expressway. So, um, I'd like to invite staff to open it up with some discussion for us, please.
Good morning councillors. And so I had a little speech prepared last night and about an hour and a half ago, we got an email from Kiwi Rail that probably changes the nature of the discussion somewhat. So, um, I'll just read that out to you. Um, regarding the requested date affecting the cycle at Scruttons Road, Kiwi Rail would seek to continue in discussions with this, about this with Christchurch City Council and hence move this date to a later to be confirmed date. That is the extent of the information we've had at this time. So we have no idea whether that date is a week, a month, a year, a decade. So, um, that's as much information as I can give you at this time. And my sense reading back through the report that we got you, uh, last night, um, is that, um, I believe everything still stands. The, the reasons for the recommendation we put forward were about the risk of Kiwi Rail closing the level crossing and the knock on impacts of that. Um, and, uh, resolution four, um, specifically says notes that staff will reopen the cycle way should Kiwi Rail rescind its request for immediate closure until permanent works are completed. So I believe that the staff recommendation and resolution still stand and that we would use provision four to keep the cycle way open.
Well, we're going to have to change these resolutions now, aren't we? Because we're not approving a temporary closure.
Um, if, if I could say because we don't know how long that postponement is, it may be that we do have to, as Jacob said, if it's a week, um, then we may have to go forward with a temporary closure.
Yes, but that we can address that at the time. I don't think we need to have that in the resolution today. I don't think that's a decision that we're making today. We've, so now it's changed. Kiwi Rail are not instructing us to close it. So I think we can receive the information.
Through the chair.
Yep.
Can I correct that? Kiwi Rail are still instructing us to close it. They are just, they have just, they have just given us a stay of execution, if you like, on the date. The instruction to close still stands unless there are, unless there are improvements made to the, um, crossing and hence as staff, we, we, we still think these, um, the resolutions and the recommendations in this report stand because we need to be able to act with Kiwi Rail.
Um, so that just, I know you've got a question councillor Templeton, but my question is have Kiwi Rail actually instructed us to close it or have they left that option to us? Because that seems to be a matter of, um, um, unclarity between elected members here. Some are saying we've been instructed, some are saying, no, Kiwi Rail have told us it's our choice.
Let me, can I read again? We'll, we'll read the same thing we read the other day, but this comes directly from the letter from Kiwi Rail, which we received on the thirtieth of September. Um, Kiwi Rail is requesting that the cycle be closed by the fifteenth of November twenty twenty four. Um, if councillor I'm willing to take this action, then Kiwi Rail will be put in a position where further options will need to be assessed to ensure safety at the level crossing for users. This could include closure of the level crossing if there is no suitable alternative that achieves the required standard of safety. So, um, as a request, I think it's a fairly firm request.
Yeah, it's a request. Um, and then, and then saying if we don't, then blah, blah, blah. But there's not any kind of legal recourse or anything like that involved.
Um, those are matters that we would have to discuss in, um, PX, the legal recourse.
Right. But anyway, I don't think we need to do that now because at the moment we've got, been given some extra time. So I'll go to councillor Templeton's question.
Firstly, I was just wondering if someone could forward us through that wording, just so we can actually just forward us the email, just so, just I can see the wording.
The email from Kiwi Rail.
Yeah, yeah, just, it's just that wording.
We can send that at the, at the conclusion of the meeting, yes.
Can you just read it again?
Um, so it says, um, regarding the requested date affecting the cycle way at Scruttons Road, Kiwi Rail would seek to continue in discussions about this with Christchurch City Council and hence move this date to a later to be confirmed date.
So they are not taking the date off the table.
They're not, yeah, they're not taking the, the request off the table.
No, they are not taking it off the table. And, and as we indicated, it could be, and, and I, I have a meeting tomorrow with senior staff at, uh, staff member at, at Kiwi Rail. I don't know how, we're, we're talking about it. Um, but I don't know whether that date's going to be a day, a week, a month.
Yeah.
After Christmas, I don't know.
Yep. So, um, so I've got a proposed amendment, which actually might actually now fit in better with, with what they're saying. And that was to, to defer the closure until either the end of the school year, so to allow the kids to bike to school safely, at least till the end of the school year, or until the Kiwi Rail board have, um, had a chance to kind of reconsider and, and both kinds of things, whichever is the later.
So Sarah, what about if we changed three to,
And it is a number three.
To read approve the temporary closure of part of the Heathcote Expressway, should Kiwi Rail request this by giving us a date?
Well, the thing is the defer.
Because if you go putting a date in your amendment, that could be an earlier date than what they are going to give us.
Well, no, mine says whichever is the later. So.
But I think that gives them an indication.
Yeah, so it should, I think Katie's got it.
I think it gives them an indication that we'd be happy to close it by the end of the school year, which I don't think we have.
No, 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 no.
It could be read that way.
The amendment, no, it says, you know, keep it open till at least the end of the school year, or they've considered whichever is, is the later. So if they reconsider it and say, actually, no, we still want you to close it on the first of December, I think we should wait till the end of the school year, like to get those kids to school safely.
Elizabeth. If I may, through the chair, I think that if we can have a discussion in PX, it will help inform some of these resolutions that we're putting through.
Okay.
We just do some public questions first then on the safety assessment.
So we'll just park your amendment for now. We've got, um, councillor Scandret.
Yeah, thank you. The, the wording is to work with staff. That's correct. And that latest information you've got, what did it say?
Discussions with city council.
Yeah. Now, I know, um, that the Kiwi Rail obviously are apparent to themselves and decide dates, et cetera, but they have indicated that they want to work in that with us. So I don't think it'll be a week or a month. I think that will be in discussion with us. I don't think there's going to be any surprises. So could, could we actually leave this on the table? Why not? Because at the moment, there's going to be no closure. So.
The problem is if they come back mid-December, then we've got no council meeting to make a different decision.
Well, but, but no, but we're missing, I think we're missing the point. They want to work with our staff. So if they came back and said, oh, we want to come back December, our staff could turn around and say, well, no, you can't because we've got to run this by council. And then the next council meeting is in, you know, January, February, whatever. So that would be an, so with your meeting with senior management of Kiwi Rail, can that be indicated that the, the, from our side of things, the last council meeting, I think is what, twelfth December? So therefore there would not be another decision from our side of things until the new year.
Yeah, well, look, um, I actually really support that idea, but right now I think we should take staff advice and go into PX, get your advice, um, your, um, your take on, on, on the information that we've got. Then we'll reconvene and we'll have further discussion. So I'll move that we go into PX, seconded by Kelly Barber. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Posed, that's carried.
We're resuming the meeting, the public meeting on... Are there any further questions for staff on this one? And Mark, sorry, you've got your hand up.
I'm not sure whether asked us here or not, but is there the possibility in option three in your supplementary agenda to simply say no to closing this cycleway?
And that just leads us into the relationship issue which you might want to reiterate again.
That's what I just clarified, that would not be the advice of staff.
No, I mean we did put up an option that was to keep the cycleway open and we laid out the risks in the report, so.
Yeah. Any other questions? Sarah, did you have a question?
Yeah, so the current sort of legislation doesn't provide for KiwiRail to be looking at broader transport network things. transport network things. Is it, is it, is it legislation that that's under or is it more KiwiRail specific? So where does, where does that kind of stuff lie? Do we know? So KiwiRail are very focused on their level crossings, their risks. Do we know where those risks lie?
No, I don't believe we can provide an answer to that.
Okay, so I've got an additional amendment up there.
Where is it?
Uh, it's on its way, um, that asks us to write to the KiwiRail board and appropriate ministers. So that'd be the shareholding ministers and Minister for Transport, um, requesting a change to policy direction and or legislation because we're not quite sure where that sits. Um, that would enable KiwiRail to take into account broader transport network safety when making decisions on level crossings. Um, hopefully that would enable us not just to not close things, but actually to enable a better relationship when planning safer transport in the, that might even use the rail corridor, those kind of things, because we've had issues with that over a period of time.
Um, yes. Would you want to put the word potential change? Because otherwise you're directing them to change their policy.
Requesting. It says requesting, not directing.
Requesting changed policy.
Um.
So.
So.
Elizabeth, do you, what do you think?
Um, it, it seems to me that that would be a helpful and useful part of the discussion. I'm sure it'd be useful for us and for KiwiRail and for users of the transport network. That's sort of my, my opinion as a council staff officer rather than a lawyer, but I also think that it would be helpful um, for the issues that we're being asked to consider and that KiwiRail are being asked to consider as well.
So on the actual level crossing itself, so it's the Premier Jacob one, when we, um, if, if KiwiRail, um, are going to be talking to us more about this, that deferring their decision on the closure and the request for a period of time. I know while we've got, um, on the cycleway side of the level crossing is where the focus was for the most part on those upgrades, those temporary upgrades. So the, the extra lights, all those kind of things. From the cycleway side, it is super clear when there's a train coming. You've got lots of bells and whistles. Uh, not, sorry, bells and lights, not actual whistles. Um, on the other side, we didn't actually do any upgrades. Is there the potential if, um, to suggest additional temporary measures on that side? Um, I notice in Kaipoi, for example, they've got paint on the ground that says look for trains, those kind of things, the temporary easy measures to ease concerns. Yeah.
Yeah.
In the meantime.
Yeah, yeah. Um, the LCSa did, um, note some, um, issues with road, the road condition and road marking, which we can sort out through maintenance budgets. They'd be relatively low, low cost and would.
And really quick to implement.
Yeah.
So we could get those done in the next couple of weeks if there was an agreement.
Potentially, yeah. But yeah, they are, some of them, some of the issues are relatively small and could be sorted out, yeah, at relatively low cost.
Okay, and I was asked that one we've talked about before, which was the, um, the, the road, the, the relative risk on our roading network for, for people. Could you talk us through the, the, the sort of types of levels of risk that we accept or don't accept on our, on the roading network?
So I, I, I don't know about what we accept, but certainly NZTA's KiwiRap guide, um, puts in place high, medium and low and, and that makes a difference in what they've been funding over the past few years. Um, their low risk, um, has a rate for DSIs which, um, I apologize, I can't remember. Sorry, a death and serious injury rate. Um, sorry, I can't remember the exact number, but I think it's about one every, um, six to seven years, something. Um, we then did an exercise to look at the number of deaths versus serious injuries and we ended up with a, a kind of, it ended up at about a fatality rate of, of about a one in a hundred and thirty five years as a, considered a low risk on the road network.
Yeah.
Um, so that's kind of where the road sits, but like I said earlier, the, the railed system is, is a different beast. It has a small number of extremely high impact, um, events which they consider a more like airlines or, or something, that kind of industry. So, um, so they don't see themselves as, as similar more as light roads. They see themselves more similar to sort of aircraft and the levels of safety you have to have there.
And I just want to point out, um, to colleagues, because we're, this is in a adjourned meeting, so there's no formal part of this particular session today that would accept petitions and things. I just wanted to highlight while we're here in public and with the organizer here that I did email around the scanned version of the, um, community petition on this, um, earlier today. Um, so that's, that's sitting in your mailboxes there. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, just to sort of go a little bit further from Council Templeton's, um, request there. Um, I'd really like to look at putting in a clause to this for us as a council to request to meet as soon as possible with the KiwiRail board to, um, discuss this Scranton Roads, um, example and also the wider ongoing relationship, um, to try and get us on a better footing going forward with KiwiRail if we could.
So I've got an amendment there from councillor Peters with what he's just spoken about, um, and I can't see any issue with that. Uh, if KiwiRail agrees to meet with us, that would be probably a very nice meeting to have, uh, and councillor Templeton's amendment um, regarding the, um, changing their policy direction. So is the committee, that the, um, council was happy with those two amendments to be included into the substantive? Anyone object to that? Yanni, is your question about these?
I'm wondering if we should also invite the local MPs who have been quite, um, outspoken.
Well, I mean, I, I think Mark's intention, should you not keep it small or?
Looking to try and keep it governor to governor at this stage, but, um, certainly involving local MPs may not be a silly idea of the, of the ministers.
Or do we need a separate meeting with the government? I mean, I don't know what's happening with our government relationship, but is there one? Do we have a way in which we do work together on local issues with the MPs and what's the best way to do it?
The, um, the issue of trying to arrange a meeting around MPs is you're going to limit your time. I mean, it's hard enough to get us available as well.
I'd prefer to keep this focused up again.
So what, maybe what we could do is once you've got the meeting organized, open the invitation to them. If they can come, they can come and then have another one later on. And I think, um, councillor Johansson's referring to perhaps it's time we met with the MPs.
I would suspect that the KiwiRail board are less likely to want to come if there's a wider group of.
Okay, no, that's fine.
And, um, councillor Peters, it does, would it have to be all of the councillors or perhaps just a few that are willing to come or want to come?
It is a very large group, but I mean, we can work on that going forward, I guess, as to whether it's all of us or, or just a selection.
Okay, we'll work on that. All right, so we'll roll those into the substantive and I think if we've.
I just put through another amendment, uh, in the event that the thing was closed, that we could, we could, I mean, given the ECAN have already been quite nimble in responding to another nonsensical closure, um, that, you know, we could at least approach them, um, and ask them to extend a particular service in the event that the clock crossing was closed.
Explain to the meeting and the public who might be listening how that is relevant to this paper. I'm not saying it's not.
Um, it's just trying to be pragmatic and trying to find, so basically, so what I'm asking, so, so recently, there's been a national directive to ban, um, bikes on bike carriers on buses. Now that's currently happening, so in response to that, ECAN have created a service that is carrying bikes from Littleton through to Heathcote. So it's, it's surmounting a, a, a problem with a, with a pragmatic solution involving bicycles and not being able to get bicycles through an obstacle. We've got another potential obstacle for bicycles here that's creating a safety issue. So it would be basically using the same approach to surmount that, the same obstacle and by asking to ECAN to support us on that.
Is this a bus route?
Sorry?
This is an existing bus route?
It's an existing bus route, yes.
So you'd want to ask if ECAN would have a, a facility that people could put their bikes.
Yeah, because they've been pragmatic and nimble in, in dealing with the, the other crazy directive.
So you might want to add on there, should this, should this, um.
Should the closure happen?
The closure happen.
Could they consider, uh, extending their, the, the current service which goes from, um, Fisherman's Wharf restaurant in Littleton?
Yep, yep.
Which is a very good restaurant.
Is it?
Um, and through to, through to the gondola.
Yeah, I understand that. So, so you want to just put, should the route be closed at the beginning?
Yeah, should that route be closed? Yeah, yeah.
The closure occur.
Should the closure occur, yeah.
Let staff ask ECAN. Okay, I don't have an, does anyone have an issue with rolling that in? Okay, we'll roll that in. Look, Yanni.
Can we just, um, can I just move another amendment too, just to add a note that, because we did get raised in public from a deputation around, um, note that the council has also asked for an update on the Fennelton Road rail crossing.
That's, that's not really in the scope of this paper, it's not covered.
We've asked for it, it's been noted. I mean, otherwise where do you stop and start all that?
Yeah.
Okay, um, and then I just, I just have one question on the substantial resolutions at one point. Oh, I just, I was still trying to find the 2.5 million, which still seems like a huge cost. Um, so is, is there a breakdown? I was just concerned that we're agreeing to do that without actually getting a breakdown of what it's covering in this report.
It's just noting that's in the budget, isn't it?
Uh, no.
Where is it? What is it? Seven? No, it sits in the budget.
It's in the budget.
Yeah.
So if there's no more questions, um, we'll move into debate. So, so we need to debate on this. Councillor Templeton. Oh, it's moved, been moved in second?
It's not yet.
See, councillor Templeton, uh, who wants to move this? I'll move it. Can I have a second there? Councillor Barber, right, now debate. Yep.
Um, sorry, Katie, I just sent through a, an image. Um, I have a, a real concern about the position that we've been put in as council, both as an organisation and an elected council on this one. It's our job to look at the risks across the city and, um, while I acknowledge KiwiRail have a mandate only to look at the risks to their own system that needs to change. Um, but additionally, KiwiRail, um, do set their own standards within that and what they will and won't accept. And I believe that in this case, um, what they are willing to, um, uh, what they are saying they won't accept is completely unreasonable. The safety assessment is clear that the proposed design, which is now incredibly, um, expensive and the safety assessment says is, um, cost prohibitive, is not warranted and won't address some of the issues that KiwiRail want addressed at that crossing. My preference is for the Heathcote Expressway to stay open um, until an agreement is made and the level crossing upgrade takes place. I don't believe that the current proposed one is warranted. And I think in the meantime, while the cycleway stays open, we should just be doing some extra enhancements on the, on the residential side where the main residential areas are on Scranton's Road. Um, we've had a long discussion in PX and I'm still of the view that we need to keep the cycleway open. This here is, um, the port, the tunnel road off-ramp at Port Hills Road. So it's going, they're going from a hundred kilometres an hour where that sign is. Um, they're going from a hundred kilometres hour to sixty kilometres an hour. Um, that small path that you can see is where cyclists come along beside Port Hills Road. And where that truck is, is where a cyclist is supposed to be with that truck going sixty kilometres an hour. Um, while there are risks when it comes to, um, a range of things on that network. Um, I'm glad that we're no longer in the position of being asked to approve the cycleway being closed as councillors. But our staff are in a really poor position because if they are directed by KiwiRail, and we did say directed now, not just requested, to close it. Um, there will be people who, additional people who will be going here. On the other side of the road, you need to cross over the on-ramp. Um, where the trucks are heading towards Wollston. And because it's an on-ramp, the trucks speed up ahead of the ramp. Um, and I once got cut off by a petrol tanker there. Um, it's not a very pleasant experience. Uh, this is the area where the kids don't want to bike when they're going to Teatai College and I completely get that. The other way is, um, to go down Bridle Path Road and to join the other cycleway at the end of Bridle Path Road, which would be fantastic. But to get to it, you also need to, um, go through a section of road that feels really unsafe. Yeah.
Thank you. Um, it's really frustrating to have to be here today to, um, even be discussing this matter. And, um, hence I've added a, a clause into this resolution today to try and get us as a council meeting as soon as we can with the KiwiRail board to discuss this, uh, particular Heathcote Expressway, cycleway to, um, issue and figure out how we can try and, um, work it out along with trying to get to some agreement with them about how we as organisations and governors can work constructively together, uh, for the greater good of our Christchurch ratepayers and taxpayers so that we can coexist happily in this city as we interact and intersect onto each other's networks. Um, so really keen to try and get that, that meeting happening. Um, I've even reached out to one of the directors of KiwiRail this morning, who's going to raise it with their board tomorrow, hopefully. Uh, and we can hopefully start some discussion. Also, really, um, you know, back councillor Templeton and her thoughts around that alternative route. I mean, that's horrendous to see these, those that use that cycleway then being required because it's the only option available to use an extremely dangerous environment like Port Hills Road with the heavy traffic that goes along there. Um, that's really untenable to me and I'm sure it's untenable to, to all of us to put people in, in potentially harm's way because we can't use a piece of the, um, infrastructure that we've invested, you know, in as a city and then being required to close at the, um, rather unfortunate request that KiwiRail have put before us. Um, I'm also extremely reluctant to approve the closure of that Heathcote Express cycleway. Um, and, um, I do note that the, the council staff do have that delegation going forward, should they be directed to by KiwiRail. Hopefully that direction never comes to surface and we can find a way to, uh, navigate our way through this impasse and get to a place where we can happily coexist together and play well in the sandpit together. Um, we've got to be mature about this. We've got to find a solution. We've got many places across Christchurch where we're intersecting onto each other's, um, networks. And we've got to find a way of working this out so that we can all move forward, um, in a reasonable relationship rather than a one-sided relationship that's costing our ratepayers a heap. Um, we've got to, you know.
Thank you.
Try and get together with them, the KiwiRail board as governors and also, I believe, the ministers, um, get the government onside to try and sort this out.
Thank you. Councillor Fields?
Thank you, Minister. Um, yeah, I support the resolution. It's not ideal. Um, we're all sitting around here pretty much agreeing with, with, with one another, which is fantastic. There are lots of people agreeing. We've got ministers agreeing with us. We've got MPs agreeing with us. Everyone's pretty much agreeing, so that is good. So we're just taking a pragmatic, um, stance at this time. Again, it's not ideal. I think that you, you you can't really make an omelette without, without breaking eggs, unfortunately. And it's, I mean, it's a, and as we're creating this, you know, I mean, all the good things that we're doing in Christchurch, we have to reckon at some stage with the, with the regulatory framework that sort of makes things, um, doable and undoable and all that sort of stuff. We've got this amazing cycleway. I go through there all the time. Um, but look, the reality is it does run next to a railway line. And, and we do have to sort of think about the safety as not for one second, does anybody in this room or anybody commenting on this, um, process want anybody to come to any harm at that point? So we have to make sure that we get that right. And there is a bottleneck coming from the Port of Littleton. Um, who knows how technology will change? That, that railway, um, line could become, could, could increase in, um, in freight volumes over time with, with the way that, that freight movements happen between ships and, and land ports and all that sort of stuff. We just don't know. So it could make it even more unsafe. So it's good that we're dealing with it now. Uh, we have to be a little bit pragmatic, pragmatic, agree with everything, uh, Mark and Sarah have said. Um, and yeah, we've just got to keep engaging and just try and, try and get a good outcome here. Pragmatic now, but, um, yeah, but hopefully we'll all see sense in the end and get a good solution.
Thank you. Thank you for keeping your debate concise as we're running really short of time. Councillor Harrison Hunt?
Kilkato, it's things like this, um, which I'm thankful for, particularly around, uh, holes in policy. And when we're looking at the risk profiles, which I've asked staff before, um, they obviously don't align and that, that sometimes they misalign, particularly with NZT. Particularly with NZTA, with Kiwi Rail, with other governmental organisations. And to be quite honest, uh, a lot of organisations tend to call local government the little brother of such a big beast, which is central government. Um, when in actual fact we do more on the daily and affect more people's lives than anybody else, um, does it all. Everything you walk out, we work on the footpaths, the roads, the parks, the gardens, community groups, water. There's so many things that we affect the rate payer, the taxpayer on a daily basis. Now, when we're looking at a hierarchy of power, we tend to see obviously central government and local government, but when it comes to the subsidiaries like Kiwi Rail, NZTA, et cetera, et cetera. There tends to be a bit of an impasse, as which is said in, um, one of the, um, recommendations here. So I completely support, um, the amendments that are put forward. Uh, I wanted to hone in on councillor Templeton's one. Um, where we want to look at a request to changing, um, policy frameworks and provisions, particularly more extending them to extend the risk profile that has a bit more of a broader range where we can align with any of those. I feel like low, medium, high don't tend to be able to hit the mark when it comes to local government because it's so multifaceted. So I support this, um, for now. There may be parts which I may not support. Um, but in essence, um, we do know the impasses that we have, particularly with, um, rate payer and taxpayer. And the rate payer tend to lose the most, more than anybody else. Kilda?
Thank you. Now councillor Scandrick?
Um, thank you. First of all, I want to thank the media for picking this up and, um, honestly covering it, but and what's happening and what's being forced rather than well and good negotiation between, uh, government organisation, central government, if you like, and ourselves. There is so much dictated to councils by central government and agencies like Kiwi Rail and, um, um, the, yeah, roading, et cetera. I guess to really start to understand what, what we're being forced to do is, is, um, a really good way forward for our public to realise that it's not just council pushing things. Um. I, I, um, admire our staff for their tenacity and their, um, stalwart arguments with, um, Kiwi Rail, but most of all for wanting an open mind to work together for the future. And I think that's the way we've got to look at this. Um, I will be supporting this. Um, however frustrated we all are, um, I really, um, commend our staff for looking forward to the future and trying to get around this and working with Kiwi Rail to, um, look at better actions for the future for the people of Christchurch.
Thank you. Councillor Hanson?
Uh, thank you. Um, th- this is pretty frustrating and the reason that it's frustrating is that this is not a new issue for us as a city. There have been repeated cases similar to this over the last couple of years with Kiwi Rail and in particular places like Horsell Junction Road. And it's a shame that councillor Jimmy Chen isn't here, former councillor Jimmy Chen isn't here to um, bang his fist on the table as well because this has been an ongoing saga for many, many years now. And when I reflect on that, there still seems to be a need as a city to, as, as a council to come up with some sort of improved government relations strategy so that we can have these conversations at an earlier stage rather than waiting until, um, it gets to the end point. Especially with Kiwi Rail. This is not a new request. Many of these resolutions are not new requests. There have been previous debates in this chamber about seeking meetings with ministers, with chief executives, with governance. And we still end up today at the same place. Uh, I think the, one of the mistakes that we made was um, giving in so easily on Horsell Junction Road as well. We put significant quantum of extra funding for Kiwi Rail's requests into that project. And I think that that does raise to me the other concern where we need to understand from a risk point of view, how we're allocating resources across the city. And we need audit and risk and we need our risk register to be picking up on these things very early and putting in place mitigations to again, stop this from happening at the end of the process, but rather being picked up at the start, ahead of signing agreements that commit us to certain things that don't always give us, uh, good, um, outcomes. Uh. Fundamentally though, um, I think now is the time to put as much pressure as possible and to stand up to Kiwi Rail who it appears have just been absolutely carried away with the requirements they're putting us as a city to spend huge fortunes of money, which we can ill afford to spend for these unrealistic uh, upgrades and safety improvements at extraordinary costs. I'm still concerned that even two point five million seems like a heck of a lot of money to go into this project when we've got so many other projects across the city where we do have risks and we do need to address. Um, but I will support the resolutions today, um, although I am concerned under three that, um, you know, giving any sort of, uh, power to Kiwi Rail to come and close the cycle way um, and saying that we will do that, um, it, it does concern me. Um, but I know that that is trying to be a pragmatic response by council staff, but we need to stand up to Kiwi Rail as much as we possibly can. The public are on our side. It is clear that there's been a huge growth in this extraordinary risk assessment stuff that has led to very um, difficult to understand decisions being made and putting an extraordinary cost on us as a city and on our community for, for what just doesn't appear to be a very common sense approach.
Councillor Barber?
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, I think everybody's spoken really well about this issue around the table. Um, I think we're all frustrated. We've spent far more time on this than, um, than we needed to. Uh, I'm really hoping that Ki-Rail, Kiwi Rail will be open to more pragmatic solutions instead of taking a sort of a tone deaf approach. Um, I also want to thank the council staff for their time and patience that they put into this, uh, grappling with the possibilities and potentialities. Uh, I also want to reiterate what councillor Scandrick said. Uh, sometimes the media can be absolutely fantastic and in this case, um, making it, um, really clear to Kiwi Rail that there is a, a huge amount of opposition to this. Um, I think they should get out in public a bit more and listen to the people and work with them towards pragmatic solutions instead of, uh, pontificating from on high. Um, yeah, so I'm really supportive, uh, of this and, uh, that's my second cheers.
Thank you, Victoria.
Uh, thank you. I think fundamentally this is a question of risk for us today and it's not just about risk to life or limb, but it's about reputational risk. We've spoken a bit about legal risk and also I think financial risk exposure. And, uh, we have to realise that we cannot, uh, eliminate the risk entirely. So it follows that we're not going to get a perfect outcome today. Um, I personally, I think that amended resolution number three is the backdoor route to get the same resolution as we had in the original report, which is to close the cycle way. We've already got the direction to close it. Whether we call it a request or a direction is neither here nor there. Uh, what remains in the balance is when it's going to happen. Um, so for me, notwithstanding that latest email and the amendments that we've got, the net result is still the same that the cycle way will be closed. And that's what we're asked to decide on. Now, we've been told that the position from staff, they've reached this is because they think that the risks, um, what's their wording, is potentially large. That's the wording that's in the report. Uh, and we've heard that the legal position is largely unknown and untested. Now, be that as it may, what we do know is that there's a really huge imbalance of power and the cost that Kiwi Rail is putting on us is unreasonable. Uh, and let's be under no illusion here, this is a really slippery slope. We've heard that there's many crossings like this across the city. And the financial risk exposure to us is potentially, um, really huge. Now, we don't need a legal opinion on that. That's just, um, I think that's pretty obvious. Uh, from a, yeah, this is in a legal perspective, but to my mind, the imbalance of power is, uh, by another name is unconscionable bargaining. It's clearly unfair and it's unreasonable. And for me, you know, there's no, there's no easy decision here. Uh, it's, um, it's imperfect. But at the end of the day, closing the cycle way just makes absolutely no sense whatsoever. And we are elected to make good decisions. Making a decision to close the cycle way isn't a good decision. I'm really struggling to accept that today.
Thank you. And lastly, Aaron?
Yeah, um, what a, uh, what a situation we find ourselves in. Uh, this is, um, A for a start, and it's been mentioned before, but everyone around the table agrees that this cycle way is an asset to our city. We might all disagree on, uh, the cost of the installation, but the cycle way itself, we all agree on and it's of value. And the pictures that Sarah put up before, that's during bright sunshine. That's not at twilight. That's not in the middle of the night. That's not on a foggy day. Uh, that's bright sunshine. Uh, so that is, that, that road is only for competent cyclists. It is, it is not for anyone else. Uh, and, uh, I'm, I'm a risk taker. I would bike there, but I would not let my children bike there. Um, and so if, uh, that cycle way was closed, I would be, and that was my area, I'd be driving my children to school. Um, so how did we get to a situation where, uh, something that's going to cost seven point two million dollars because three more people go near the site, that cross the railway line when the, those people would clearly know there's a train track there. They would know the dangers and they would behave appropriately around that. This is a form of health and safety, uh, administration just gone so wrong. Uh, and we have the same problem in Radcliffe Road. That's why there is not a shared path there. So on Radcliffe Road on those foggy nights, the kids are forced to walk on the edge of the white line because otherwise they're in long wet grass. And that is because Kiwi Rail will not let us do the crossing there either. Uh, they, uh, won't cross, uh, the railway track. Uh, it's been held up for years. It got moved forward in, in our LTP uh, a couple of years ago and should have already been delivered. So, and again, a very dangerous situation caused by Kiwi Rail. I'm going to ask the question, and it should be a mathematical one, what is the value of Kiwi Rail to New Zealand anymore? And I'm serious about that. You've got to add up the cost of the amount they lose every year. Then you add up the cost of doing all of these upgrades for the sake of twelve percent of New Zealand's freight. New Zealand has to have a serious conversation. Can we afford that if someone might die every thousand years? Uh, uh, so you, you have to balance that decision and I think as a country, we have to have a conversation to go if we're going to make such dumb decisions in favour of such ludicrous equations around health and safety, then close Kiwi Rail.
All right. Mel?
Because it has no value when it costs that much.
The decision today, um, gives our council staff the ability to close the cycle way if and when directed by Kiwi Rail. I know they've said it's to be confirmed the date, but it's if and when in my view. The moment it will remain open beyond tomorrow, which is a positive thing. So we should be thinking about that. Like all councillors, I feel the closure of the cycle way has no reaction to potential risks, but council also doesn't want to be responsible for increasing the risk to people being killed or severely injured if they decide to cross the railway line. And also if we don't give staff the ability to close the cycle way in response to a directive from Kiwi Rail, then there's a good chance that Kiwi Rail may force the closure of Scruton's Road. They have the overriding authority to do that. Now, considering there's a family that lives on the other side of the crossing and there doesn't appear to be any other access except via Scruton's Road, it, um, it means allowing for the potential for the road to be closed is not an option that's open to us in my view. So that all means the only pragmatic way forward with this is to work with Kiwi Rail, move the design forward for the works and hope that maybe, maybe the cycle way may only close for a short period of time once the work to get it constructed is ready to go. So fingers crossed.
Thank you. Look, I, um, I won't debate because we're really out of time, but I just want to say, um, councillor Koka, I think he put that so succinctly. I couldn't improve on that. And I too took it as a real positive sign that Kiwi Rail have come and offered this time extension until we continue to work. There may be other solutions rather than the big one, who knows? So I'll put the motion today. All those in favour say aye? Opposed? Councillor Templeton's opposed number three? Hold up, that's the henstof opposed? It is something that we'd all like to vote against, I'm sure, but I think it's pragmatic.
Um, if any of the councillors are opposed to particular recommendations, please, um, let me in as I can work it. Yeah. Uh, councillor Peters? Councillor Fields?
Yep.
Sorry guys, I can't hear Katie.
Hi councillor Goff, can you hear now?
I can hear you.
Great. Thank you. We haven't gotten to you yet.
It's no to all of them things.
Uh, councillor Goff?
No.
Councillor Johansson? Councillor Keown? Councillor Barber?
Yes.
Councillor McCullen? Councillor Scandrick?
Yes.
Councillor Templeton? That's ten for.
Councillor Pies?
Six against. Was it yes?
Carried. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, so just for clarification, the other three items, so we could take those forward to the next meeting or reconvene after lunch?
We could adjourn until after lunch till one o'clock and then do those ones.
Right, okay. We'll adjourn till after lunch at one o'clock. Um, I may be a few minutes late back because I'm going to the Edgeware Pool Site Blessing. Um, and if I am late back, councillor Scandrick's going to take you through.
And this is a really high pressure day today, sorry everybody but so we've got half an hour that we can allocate to the council meeting. Hoping that we'll get at least sixteen and seventeen done and if we don't get it all done, we will defer any remaining items to the meeting for the twentieth. And then we'll close the meeting and go into the rest of our afternoon. So item sixteen, Joshua, would you like to kick away please?
Yeah, I'll take the report as read. We just have two applications to the discretionary response fund and one application to the place partnership fund as detailed.
Any questions? Silly's, councillor Donovan.
Sorry, I was a bit late back, so I haven't got it up in front of me, but I just had a couple of questions about Greenlab.
Yes.
Um, can you just confirm how much funding they received from us in the last financial year?
Uh, so for this financial year, uh, they've received five thousand from the strengthening communities fund. Um, and thirty-five thousand, um, that was technically given in the last financial year, but to be applied in this financial year, so a total of forty.
Right, and what was in the previous financial year?
Uh, previously, it was eighty thousand per year through the eleven places fund, um, programme.
Um, so there's been quite a change in the amount of funding in the last two financial years in terms of had quite a substantial drop. Um, how much is left in the place partnership fund?
Um, hundred and, uh, hundred and sixteen thousand three hundred dollars.
Right, okay, so if we were of the mind to put forward a little bit of funding to make sure that they they were able to deliver. Um, part of the project, um, would that leave the fun in a healthy enough position that other groups could still apply?
Certainly, um, the only implication would be if there were other groups that came later in the year. Um, there would be an equivalent amount not available then, but yes, the the fund has capacity.
Great, um, so I just want to put forward a small amendment for the Greenlab. For the sum of twelve thousand for, um, delivering the Avon Hub project, so to be. One part of the project, um, just to make sure that they've got that continuity, because they've gone from being, um, having. An annual fund of, sorry, what was that, eighty thousand, um, and they've dropped quite substantially. Our community board gave them a one-off grant, but it was for a project, not for operational. Projects, so they won't be able to continue delivering those over the next year without a bit of continuity, so, um.
So which, which, uh, which, um, recommendation are you wanting to amend councillor Donovan?
Motion zero, decline this one.
Uh, for the place partnership fund, so which one's that one?
Have the second.
So five.
Oh, sorry, greening the rubble.
Greening the rubble.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it'd be changing from a decline to a grant of twelve thousand.
Approves the grant, what were you wanting to?
Uh, for a total of twelve thousand.
So do we have a second for that, councillor Barber?
The number five is approved.
Are there any other questions? All right, is there any debate? Councillor Skander?
Yeah, the, um, greening the rubble and a couple, the other groups do a fantastic job, but I do think at some stage. They do need to get together and discuss how they can do, share the administration, et cetera, because we've got three groups. Who technically formed following the earthquake, we're now well and truly a decade after that. The, the, the city's moving on, I think they need to move on. And rather than giving funding to three groups to do three lots of administration, although they do have specialist areas. I do think they've got to start looking more seriously at how they are delivering, so I totally support this. And so thanks for bringing it up, but I, you know, I've mentioned it before and I think it's on them to start changing it. Or I'm going to have to start looking at how I support these organisations, thank you.
Okay, can I ask, um, for staff to just send us a memo at some time about those three organisations? And their points of difference and their points of alignment, just a, not a novel, but just an outline of perhaps.
Yeah, sure.
Um, so whether to support councillor Skander's idea or whether or not, so that would be helpful.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, so there's no further debate, I'll put the motion, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
I suppose that's carried, great, that's one down. Item seventeen, which is, um, pretty much a pro forma thing by the looks of it, the miscellaneous amendments to delegation, so are there any questions for staff on this one? Oh, Yanni, you have a question, uh, Tom Skander's moving it.
Thank you.
Seconded by Melanie Coker.
And appreciate that there was supposed to be changes to the mayor's welfare trust deleg- um, delegations, but that's not being addressed as part of this report. But in this report, there is actually a table that refers to the mayor's, uh, welfare fund charitable trust. Um, and that's just on page three forty-five, and it, I'm just trying to understand, um. The wording in there is wrong, so is it possible to, it says the chairperson of the mayor's welfare fund charitable trust committee currently the deputy mayor, which is incorrect. Um, so are we able just to, um, correct that or delete that text? Well, I mean, I don't know what the relevance is, it just seems that, yeah, it's a minor kind of tweak to the.
Sure, is that just in the attachment?
Yeah, so it's part B, sub-part three, other matters.
Where does it say that, Yan?
It's third, uh, fourth from the top.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, so it may just be a typo, but, um.
Well, yeah, it must be, because I didn't know.
Yeah, and and I'm the current chair.
Happy meetings if I missed.
I haven't seen you there, so, um, but the other thing is, like, just, are you able to give us an update around what's happening with that mayor's welfare trust? Delegation changes, like, in terms of getting a report back to, to do it.
So, yeah, we have sought, um, some advice from the external lawyers around the trustee and what is possible in terms of. Um, how, um, the council then delegates to staff the ability to accept applications? And what levels they'll sit at, because it's not clear in the trustee, um, at the moment.
Do we have a timeframe for getting resolution? I mean, this has been going on for two years now.
Um, not at the moment, but we expect to receive the advice within the next couple of days.
Okay.
And we can update accordingly then.
Okay, great, um.
So do you need, do you want a timeline on that then, Yanni?
There's no way council can give a delegation to staff to change the delegations, it has to be a council decision, right?
Yes, I think so.
Yeah, no, I, I guess just to flag it, so it needs to be a real priority, um, and we need to get it fixed as soon as possible, so.
Um, to have a look at the delegations for the committee, the mayor's welfare fund.
Yeah, when, when we approve the trust, you recall I raised the concern around what was happening in regards to delegations?
Yeah.
Um, and we still haven't got it resolved, so it does put, you know, it is something that we do, do need to address.
Could we, I think you need to put a timeline on it.
No, no, we're noting that we're.
I think staff are working on it.
And, and we're getting legal advice and it's coming back within, I think Maryam said, the next couple of days, so the report will be coming soon.
Quite here, yeah, next couple of days.
Yeah.
Oh, I was going to say early in the new year.
Yeah, report will be coming soon.
But, but we can just make that tweak today anyway with removing that text.
Remove the deputy mayor from the.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Approved and seconded.
Yeah, I'll put that motion, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Poes, that's carried, thank you, and then item fourteen. Which is Yotatahi Christchurch Planning Programme endorsement.
Yeah, I've told you.
No, you're right.
Yes, for a sec. Uh, so the. Yes, I'll just, just very quickly, I'm taking it as, as read. Uh, the council has been briefed on the Otatahi Christchurch planning programme alongside. The Greater Christchurch Spatial Plan and more recently as part of a briefing on growth modelling and development contributions. And endorsing the programme, that's including the attached document, the council will be agreeing to the prioritisation of local area planning areas. And as a framework to guide future planning.
Oh, that's quick, incisive introduction, questions, see you already have one, and Yanni.
Uh, we just, does it impacted at all by the information we got in the memo the other day on, um. Prioritisation and funding and re, you know, resourcing for the planning programme more broadly.
Uh, the memo, I said, last night, um, certainly the, um. Capacity of the team is limited, given the plan change programme and the local area planning pro- programme proposed, um. Ultimately, this decision is about agreement to the framework and we can discuss resourcing separately, yeah.
All good, Yanni.
I just wanted to check in terms of the priority areas, um. The, the issues around that sort of industrial residential, which, which are largely focused in the Bromley and the Wobston and the Hornby area. Um, but I see Hornby's kind of got a, a flag, but those other two don't. Do we need to signal that we will, we will be doing work in that area as part of this, or is, is it just, do we just accept that there's other work underway?
I mean, as a priority, there's the injust- industrial residential interface plan change. Uh, we think that that should proceed as that will, um, identify some options as well through that process. And, uh, any network planning can pick up some issues, uh, that may be identified through local areas in terms of infrastructure. Uh, and open space planning, but beyond that, uh, this is signalling that we need to prioritise those. Um, areas as identified in the Greater Christchurch Spatial Plan.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, and then the other question was, we've had some concern around, um. The impact of intensification on things like traffic management and, um, capacity for, for. Things like our sports fields, we, we had a deputation and, um, you know, I'm just wondering, is. There any work happening at a more global level in terms of spatial planning? Around the impact of intensification and what it means in terms of our transport network. E.G. not just requiring people to provide car parks on the private development, I know we can't do that. But what is the consequence of having, you know, a thousand extra vehicles on a small area without any sort of intervention? And, you know, what's the, the impact on things like our sports fields, for example, or our community facilities?
So certainly that is part of local area planning and that's when we look at those, uh, options within areas of more detail. That requires a, a, a more intensive focus on particular areas and what's offered. So it's very localised and that's the sort of planning that occurs through this programme.
And that's looking at streets in an area in a more holistic way, rather than just looking at car parking, it's thinking about. The whole of that space and how it's used and, for instance, the line up of wheelie bins along the footpath, crowding that space. Um, the outcome source in terms of trees, the use of the road space in terms of the balance between parking, cycle, space.
Yeah.
Potential widening of the footpath, it's the local area planning work is about looking at all of those things together rather than just parking in isolation.
And that's identified at the different scales through the programme, so this looks at the, at the neighbourhood level, it could be the catchment level. It could, and then linking and integrating in with the wider network planning.
Right, so in terms of the data we have to inform the priority areas. Do we have a sense of the areas that have got the highest number of new, new apartments consents for building? So, like, when I look at this again, like, it looks like that Wobston area, which has had massive amounts of intensification. Or that Linwood area slightly to the, to the south is missed out, and yet that's possibly where we've got some of the biggest increases.
I. I'm sorry.
I mean, intensification is occurring across the city, we, we, uh, we certainly, that's one of the inputs that when this, um. Prioritisation has resulted in identifying those areas as the, what we call the first tranche and the second tranche. Uh, so, uh, I mean, that's when we need, we do need to focus on those particular areas. It's, it's where we want to encourage the most growth and redevelopment. Uh, and it doesn't mean that other areas over time may also have a local area planning focus, but this is certainly. Um, going to keep us busy for the next few years.
Okay, the other point to add is the Greater Christchurch Spatial Plan did, did identify Eastern Christchurch as a priority regeneration area. Within that area, which is large, um, there's existing and local area planning work that's. Uh, been going for a number of years and will continue, including Linwood Village, New Brighton. But it works also commencing on looking at, um, regeneration opportunities within Linwood. The commercial centre, um, and surrounds, um, and that work will advance this, um. Recognising that a significant amount of intensification has occurred around Linwood.
Great, thank you, are there any other questions on this one? Has it been moved? No, do we have a mover? You'll move, and, um, councillor Skander will second, table ten. Thank you, any debate? All right, I'll put the motion, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, that's carried.
Thank you.
Well done, well done everyone, so we'll stand for the ca- closing karakiri and we'll close the meeting. Oh, yes. Oh, well done everyone, great. How was that? Yeah, you did so. I shouldn't be so negative, just the way this morning went.